No, we don't. I'll just note it. All right, you guys want to turn your microphones? It looks like it is seven o'clock. So I would like to call the December 3rd, 2024 Sylvan Township Board of Trustees Regular Meeting to Order. And the first item is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'd like to stand.
Pledge allegiance through the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I just wanted to make a note that Kurt Kosak is absent this evening with notice. Then we will move on to public comment. So anyone that would like to speak, we have a microphone in front. If you could state your name, please?
Hi, yeah, my name is Tom Dembski. I know, I know one of you, another one on the board. I am a new Sylvan resident. We moved here in August, my wife and I. We're not new to the area. I've been in Linden Township for 21 years. And of interest with my, what I'm going to talk about tonight is that I've been a CAFA Board Member and Board Secretary for eight years prior to stepping down just a couple of months ago. My purpose here tonight is to address the CAFA report in your board package, which is from Mr. Kosak. I'd like to provide some additional content and details that I believe are lacking. In the report, it's implied that there is an excessive salary and benefits for the chief. I assure you, this is not the case. The board approved a pay and benefits package that is reasonable and competitive with other chiefs in the area. Chief Arbeany is on a performance-based appraisal system. Since he was hired eight years ago, he's been on that. He has been rated in the highest category of distinguished each and every year, and that also affects his pay. This package is well within CAFA's budget, and I just wanted to point out that, once again, Mr. Kosak was the only one that voted no. The other major topic in the CAFA report had to do with the HVA and CAFA EMS transporting. I believe this report is confusing and somewhat misleading. Let me try to give you a little bit of the origin of the issue with CAFA and HVAC's transporting. A few years ago, CAFA's or HVAC's response times, HVAC's ambulance response times increased to a critical level. This is basically due to EMT shortages nationwide of pretty much all private sector ambulance companies. Locally, we were experiencing 20 to 40-minute waits for HVAC to arrive. So the bottom line was that HVAC was not then and still is not now meeting industry standards for response times. So what did CAFA do? CAFA became the first fire department in the county to begin transport, this was BLS transport, to fill the gap. And other fire departments are now also following. This does provide life-saving value to the communities. CAFA stepping up to fill the gap does provide life-saving value at no additional cost to the taxpayers. Mr. Kosak is the only board member to oppose CAFA transporting right from the beginning. I have met with him to discuss this. I do have a lot more to share on the subject, a lot more details and background, but just beyond my three minutes. And I am in the process of setting up meetings with each one of you Sylvan Board Members to meet one-on-one. Thank you.
Anyone else? Patrick, please.
Hi, Patrick Ziski, Sylvan Township President. I want to speak mainly to applaud the board for taking on the issue of the water under I-94 and the possible issue of Chelsea annexation. And all your efforts now and hopefully in the future to put the numbers together so we make wise decisions. So it's very good to see that. I've been around for a while here, and I've talked to a lot of residents, and I think that what the residents most care about are two things. One, that financial, that the township finances and their finances as taxpayers are in good shape with whatever decision we make. And the second thing that we don't make decisions solely on finances, that also we care about the quality of life of our residents, our residents, which has come up many times as far as subsidizing or chasing development, which is deemed beyond some point at least, which is deemed to be not in the best interests of many of our residents. So I wouldn't want to trade off the finances for quality of life too much. But getting the numbers is a big, big step, and I see that in this board meeting, you're on your way to doing that, and I really want to applaud that. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, hearing none, we'll move on to the presentation from Ted Erickson of IMAG for the discussion on the Water Interconnect feasibility report. But I just want to make one comment. So I, there is an updated report that was on the table over there with some new numbers. Ted and I had discussed an additional study that I had found where Ted had looked at some other numbers. And so in that report, you're going to see, if we need to make more copies, we can, and Ted will go over it, but Patrick, do we need more copies? Yeah, okay, so I just wanted to give some context because Ted will be discussing some different numbers in the updated report that was placed on the backboard table. It was not, nope, we just, we just send them off today.
Yeah, I got that to Township today, so. Good evening, so I guess I'm going to kind of focus on the Township future demands of the updated report. So the requirement on Eagle for water production is to provide water for the maximum days use. And that's typically a summer day when people are watering and that kind of thing, so. What we often, what we like to do is look at, you know, how much water did you use in a year? And divide it by 365, and you get X amount of gallons per day, right? And you take the maximum days from the last five, six years, whatever, and say, all right, so we use two, two and a half times or two times as much water on July 15th or June 4th or whatever day it is, and so that's your kind of maximum use day. And we take that, that, that number and apply it going forward. So Amanda earlier this week had sent me a report that I had prepared in July of '23 that during my records research for the other project I had not come across. It was filed in a proposal file versus a project number file. And that
It was July of 2022.
Yeah, I'm sorry, July 2022, thank you. And that, that analysis went through the year 17 through 22, looking at the maximum days of that. And it came up with a different answer than we had originally in the report, in the original report. The number we had used in the original report was a three-times factor, which kind of skewed you more into using more water than perhaps you would have actually been using. The number we came up with in 2022 was 1.7 times the average flow to get that max day flow. So we ended up, you know, as a kind of conservative approach, we chose to use a 2.0 multiplier from your average day to your peak, your maximum day. Doing that and kind of going through Sylvan Crossings, Westchester, Chelsea Square, and then adding 100 taps just as a kind of a fill-in, infill, we came up with that this, the cumulative system demand would be about 0.55 million gallons per day. The water plant is capable of 0.6 million gallons a day, so that, using that analysis, the flow projections show that you, you have capacity to treat, you know, the or to provide water to the system as kind of, it was intended to be developed. Is that, do you mean? I can go through the rest of this stuff, or I mean, I guess if you guys have questions, I'm happy to.
Well, I think that's, you know, when I found that discrepancy, I think that's really important that, that you're able to go back and look at that max day flow because that, that factors what changed the number dramatically.
Absolutely, and you know, the, you know, some of the reliability studies were done. The plant has been operated from time to time with, you know, filling the tower and then letting it run for three days. So if you fill that tower and let it run for three days, what's your max day, right? Is it really that three times X or is it, you know? So that happens, they, you know, they can flush hydrants or there's a water main break, and all those things can impact what that maximum day is. The stuff we did in 2022 was discussed with the operator and his, his analysis, what, you know, the highest days that we saw were significantly higher than the factor we used. But they were flushing days, so they were running hydrants or whatever, so that we discounted that because that's not actually water used by people, it's water used in the system.
And I think what I found, a big discrepancy between what we received from the City of Chelsea Interconnect to the one in 2022. You were looking at the 2016 reliability study, which had a factor of three.
Yes.
Max day factor of three, whereas in here, you were looking at data from 2017 through 2000, was it 2021?
Yeah.
Which was more recent data, and so your max factor was then 1.7.
Yes.
It, you had different flow.
And, and my experience with other, other communities, Chelsea included, Black Alpine, Manchester, Yandau, other studies I've read, you know, that two, one and a half to two and a half is kind of the range you see.
Right.
It's pretty typical. Water uses has trended down as over time. I mean, I'm sure when the system was developed, they, they were looking at a higher flow per, per house than we would look at today.
And I think concern we had when we looked at the original report from, you know, the interconnect study was that we were going to be over capacity with what was already proposed, and that was a big concern, so. You know, I'm glad we were able to circle back and I found this other report, and so I was able to ask you some questions on the calculations.
And I apologize for not including that. Like I said, that was stored in a proposal file, and it didn't come, come out in the records, the project, project, you know, actual project research, so.
And I know you and I had talked about the most recent reliability study and some concerns with some of that data as well, and so we'll have to be really cognizant of if they are looking at days where there's hydrant flushing because that impacts, you know, the max day flow, and so, you know, if that's not
Realistic and usable number is what you want, right?
Right.
You don't want something that's too low, you don't want something that's, that's, you know, artificially high, that's, that's driving you into decisions that don't make sense.
Right, okay. Any questions from the board?
Just trying to understand your charts here. So you, you say that our current design capacity is 0.62 gallons, a million gallons?
Yes, yeah, 0.620,000 gallons a day.
Yeah, so, but that's at current treatment capacity?
Yes.
So we, is it possible to increase our treatment capacity, or is that based on a fraction of the?
That's based on the equipment you have installed today, right? That's the quote-unquote plant rating, wells, treatment, pumping.
I mean, it says the firm well capacity is a million gallons. Could it be, could we upgrade our treatment to get closer to a million if?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, it'd be expensive. There, the plant isn't configured. It's, it's not configured very easily to expand, I would.
Okay. And, and on the other chart, you've got cumulative system demands. And it shows the, the three developments and then the fourth undeveloped taps.
Yes.
So it's, is it right to add all these, these three developments together for the daily demand, or?
Yeah, so that's, I mean, I think Amanda pointed this out when we met a few weeks ago, the, I'm switching gallons per day to a million gallons per day. So I can see how that's a little bit confusing, so the 79,800 gallons per day is, you know, 0.08 million gallons a day. So, you know, you were taking the, for the Westchester is roughly 150,000 gallons a day, just round numbers. So you can add that to the 0.33 to get the 0.48.
Okay, I got you.
I, I know what it says, and someone else reasoned, like, oh yeah, I can see all that, so.
The next, the next row is, is adding on the previous one and.
Yeah.
Anything else? I would also open it up if there's anyone in the public that had any questions for Ted.
I guess I don't know that. The, the, you know, the well capacity isn't the problem as much as the, you know, interior and how it was laid out and where would you, I mean, probably a new building, that kind of thing, that's what I mean by difficult to expand.
And Rod, I had asked him when we met a couple of weeks ago, because that was something that had been talked about, well, built, digging a new well isn't, isn't that expensive, it's adding on to the plant, you know, that's where.
I guess I don't, I didn't do that analysis, and I don't, you know, I don't have that knowledge, so.
Okay.
Yeah, so there's the, the, there's reports that are given to the state called monthly operating reports. And those are what we look at to determine that, and then, so every day, there's a total for every day. But sometimes those totals are skewed by other activities. The hydrants or, or, you know, they, since the usage was low, they were able to fill the tower and turn the plant off for two days or a day. And come back and fill the tower again, and there was enough capacity in the tower to run, to provide pressure to the system. I see your question, sorry, yes. Yeah, no, it's metered to the tower, not from the tower, yeah. Yeah, no, that's I mean, if, I mean, if you recorded it right, you know, if you put 300,000 gallons in the tower on Tuesday and came back on Thursday and did it again, you, you know, there's three days in there, right? So you could take that and divide it by three, it's not, it's a little bit gross because you don't know if you use more on Tuesday than you did Wednesday, but it gets you close. You know, there's, I mean, you can there's water meters that have that report back too, right? But then you're losing system leakage and other things, so it's, the water coming out of the plant, I guess you could meter it coming out of the tower as well, but I don't, I don't know the value of that particularly, just to come up with reports. That's in the, that's in the memo, right? You tell me where you're at the memo or? Yes.
So if you can explain that Ted to us too?
So, well. I think I need to address those numbers right.
Okay, all right, go ahead. If, because I'm not sure we understood Patrick's question.
Well, in the, on the first page of that, of that, of the updated report, there's a table that lists the township capacity, current average day, current max day, and I think those average day and max days are incorrect, so need to look at that.
Okay.
I think that 0.25 still comes from the 2006, 2016 reliability study, not necessarily the analysis I did, so.
Okay.
Right.
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 Anyone else?
I have a question on page seven in the summary.
You're stating that the township likely has adequate capacity for their needs in the next 10 years. Does that mean everything that's on the books now, what if somebody, what if something else wants to expand or?
That's on the books now, that's basically kind of covers what, what the system was designed for. I mean, that's the needs listed in that table, right?
Well, with your new numbers, though, you would show that with what we currently have forecasted, we'd be at 550,000 gallons, right?
You'd have adequate capacity for that, you'd have some capacity.
But, yes, if, but are we, are we agreeing that the plant is capable of 600,000 gallons a day or 620,000 gallons a day?
I think 620 is the right number.
Okay. There is additional capacity.
Yeah.
It's just a matter of, you know, how much and where we invest that capacity. Okay. Anyone else on the board? Andy? Andy? No, anything else? All right, Ted, thank you so much, really appreciate your time and, and the additional review.
Thank you.
Going back and looking at some numbers after we had a chance to talk.
Thank you for catching that other report, and I apologize for missing that.
Thank you so much, all right. We will then move on to the consent agenda. So we have the approval of the November 12th, 2024 draft regular meeting minutes, the November 20th, 2024 draft special meeting minutes, the November 25th, 2024 draft special meeting minutes, and the November 25th, 2024 draft closed session meeting minutes. Doug has its closed session meeting minutes for us to review.
Start with that, the closed session?
Uh, well, we can do that at the end, if you want.
Okay.
Uh, no, actually, we will approve these all at once, so we would need to look at that first, please, yeah.
Okay.
I have one thing, it was a misspelled word.
Yep, sign.
On November 12th.
Yep.
Page two.
So on November 12th, yep. We all saw it. November 12th. You have to do with the cemetery section.
Sign.
Right, Maple Row, yeah, it's not singing, it's not, yeah, sign, not sing.
All right.
When auto, when it's a word that's a legitimate word, doesn't catch up.
I'm just wondering if the board would like to have the public comments regarding the it would be the November 20th, public comments about Chelsea annexation, if that should be put more generically, so it's not in the public.
No, I mean, we discussed it. We want to make that amendment to your own minute, you, you're certainly welcome.
I'm just wondering if this board is fine with the way it is.
I'm okay with that.
In the public record.
I'm okay. I mean, that's a public comment from a resident as well.
Right.
Okay. I will, we can review your closed session minutes if you have them available, please. And then we are, are looking at the committee reports, board reports, department reports.
You're going to approve these?
We will approve the whole consent agenda, unless there's any amendments to the minutes besides the November 12th. Uh, November, excuse me, yeah, the November 12th, 2024 regular meeting minutes, the one amendment that we made. All right. Any discussion about the consent agenda? Anything for the reports? All right, well, then I will look for a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
So move.
Sandy?
Sure.
Thank you, Sandy. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The consent agenda is approved as amended. We will then move on to approval of the regular agenda.
I'd like to, I have an item I'd like to add to the regular agenda, and this is from the question from the Planning Commission.
Okay. What is the agenda item?
Um, the, just a minute here. Oh, so the Planning Commission is interested in doing a review of special permit for Robin Hills and direct attorney fall along with Scott Pacheco. Have them work together on that, and they want the Board of Trustees to approve funding for the attorney.
Okay, planning review of special permit for Robin Hills?
Right.
Is that okay? All right. All right, we will add that at the end of new business. Any other items? All right, I will look for a motion to approve the regular agenda as amended. Thank you, Sandy. Thank you, Doug. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The agenda is approved as amended. Moving on to unfinished business, there is no unfinished business. We will then move on to the new business. The first agenda item is proposed Township Board of Trustees meeting dates.
Oh, sorry. We had approval of bills, presentation of bills under the consent agenda?
Mm-hmm.
Is that in the? And are we going to take care of that, or?
Do we have a new process? I wasn't.
Oh, well.
We can, we can.
Signed in the, in the agenda, so I thought you were. We've got our bills.
I think that there is a new process, or we're going to approach the bills differently.
Yes. Our input is.
So let me go back and we will reopen the consent agenda because we're, we needed to reverse, so let's go back to the consent agenda. Because that's where this falls. Okay.
Hey, so I've got warrants signed, ready for Sandra. I'll just read through the, read through the.
I have reviewed.
Sandra, I mean, you, you know how this is usually done?
I have. I have looked through these already. Have you looked through them as well?
Absolutely, yeah.
Yep.
Okay. So then um, present them to you and then we're fine with it, or should I read through it for the?
No, that's not necessary as far as I'm concerned. Once the board has approved paying them and you have signed them, then you just give it to me and I sign them and give it back.
Okay. So they are lastly presented.
Then I guess that addition, we didn't need to, to revisit it because he was just, you know, we forgot to, to do that part. Okay. Alright. You're alright? You're good?
Yeah.
Alright, let's move on to proposed township board of trustees meeting dates, which is the first item on the agenda. Uh, so there was some discussion about moving the meeting date to another week in the month um, due to financial reporting and giving us more time to get things prepared. So I suggest we move to the second Tuesday of the month. Um, and there is a proposed meeting schedule in the board packet, so there are some exceptions. Monday, March the 31st would allow us to make any of the budget amendments we need to. We, we do usually schedule a special meeting around that time, but we can just include it in the regular agenda. And then on Wednesday, November the 12th, that is, has been switched because Veterans Day is on that Tuesday. Anybody? Any discussion?
I like it.
Okay. So moved. Um, let me just read it. Pardon? Let me just read it.
Motion to approve the proposed board of trustees regular meeting schedule for 2025 as presented in the board packet.
Okay, so I have a motion from Sandy.
Support.
Or from Doug. Any other discussions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Alright, we will move on to obligate federal coronavirus local fund, local fiscal recovery funds, CLFRF funds. So we had been working with the accountant and due to the time restrictions for the obligation of ARPA funds, we thankfully found another township that had utilized a resolution to obligate them for wages, which will give us more time to allocate the money as we need to. So as you see in the board packet, we, we have a presentation from the MTA who was recommending obligating these funds for wages, allowing townships to use the money in different ways outside of having to have it obligated by the 31st of this year. So I would like to, um, you see the resolution that's in the board packet. And so I would like us to consider this resolution 24 dash 10, and I will read the resolution. Whereas, under the federal coronavirus local fiscal recovery fund, CLFRF, which has established, was established under section 9901 of the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 ARPA, the township received $341,425.46. And whereas the eligible uses under CLFRF are replacing loss revenue, supporting the COVID-19 public health and economic response, premium pay for eligible workers and investing in water, sewer and broadband infrastructure. And whereas under the revenue loss category, the final rule published by the US Treasury presumes that up to 10 million in revenue has been lost due to the public health emergency and recipients are permitted to use that amount not to exceed the award amount to fund government services. And whereas the township has $242,076.47 in remaining funds that must be spent or obligated by December 31st, 2024. Now therefore be it resolved that the Sylvan Township Board, by a vote of the majority at a regularly scheduled and duly noticed meeting held this third day of December 2024, elects to use its remaining CLFRF funds under the eligible category of revenue loss and that the government services identified our employee wages and benefits allocated within the general fund during the period of performance, which is March 3rd, 2021 and December 31st, 2026. So I will offer that resolution.
Second.
Thank you Sandy. And because this is a roll call vote, um, actually, is there any discussion?
Besides, yes. Besides putting all the new AV in here, which was like 40 something thousand dollars. And we bought some new computers. What have we used? Was there another big lump like this, like the?
Uh, the, uh, security cameras as well. The security cameras were the, were the other item that we've used. So, and we ended up spending a little bit more on the AV equipment. We made some changes at the end due to some of the, uh, microphone issues. So we had to upgrade some of that equipment.
Just curious. Because I haven't worked with it. And it's so easy to fritter away a huge amount of money, 10 or 15 thousand dollars here, just.
Right? Anyone else? Sandy? Okay, any comments? Okay, then I will let you call the vote.
Okay. I will select names at random. Sandy Schultz?
Yes.
Sandra Egler?
Yes.
Amanda Nimpke?
Yes.
And me, yes.
Right. And noted that Kurt Kosak is absent. Alright. Wonderful. The resolution is adopted. That is a big weight off of our shoulders. Alright, we will move on to the feasibility and cost to extend water under I-94. So as we have been discussing the current situation, um, with neighboring city and looking at what would be in the best interest of the township going forward, I know that the area south of 94 has been identified for growth many times in the past. And I think that's critical at this time that we consider looking at the costs to go under I-94. And we would want to engage um, an engineering firm for that. I think it would be good that we would choose an independent firm that's not also hired by the city of Chelsea.
Yeah. My recommendation is that we hire Orchard Hilton Climate. Sorry. My recommendation is to hire OHM. They only work with municipalities. They have an extensive number of engineers on site that can, you know, tackle this kind of project pretty easily. I spoke with a representative of OHM that I've known for many, many years, as well as one of the principals of OHM. And they don't see that it would be a big, a big ask, although, you know, we haven't talked price or logistics or anything like that. And I wanted to come to the board first to find out if the board has the willingness to do this. I personally think it's important that we look at this because if the city moves in, to putting infrastructure under I-94, once it's over there, they could just keep chomping their way through the township and there wouldn't be anything we could do about it because we wouldn't have the infrastructure to provide water and sewer to those properties. The other part of this is I think it would be a wise investment to have an independent agency look, or an independent firm, look at our water situation, to look at the report from IMAG to see if they agree or disagree with those numbers. Because, you know, we've, we've had two reports and, you know, I, I give Ted credit. He said he made a mistake and, and that's great. But I personally would feel more comfortable if we had a second opinion, so, you know, on, on this topic to make sure. Because the last thing I want to do is be one who goes down in infamy in this township for making a bad decision that costs the residents a ton of money again. I want to have as much information as we can possibly get to run those numbers and know what we would be looking at doing before we commit to something.
And I like that, you know, you've reached out to OHM because they do not work with developers. They only work with municipalities and I think in the, in the past, that has been something that we've discussed as a conflict of interest when you have our engineer also being hired by the developer that we're working with, you know, that can present some conflicts. And so I, I really like the consideration of a firm who only works with municipalities. And I also agree looking at having a second firm look at this water capacity study who's not hired by the city would, would be a good, a good investment. At least to review those, you know, that study.
Right. Wouldn't necessarily have to start from scratch, but review all of the information and the numbers and make sure that their math is adding up the same way. Well, how long have we wondered what the cost would be? I mean, it would be awesome to, because it's 100% amorphous. We can't guess how much it would cost. We can't make any plans for that side of the township until we have some numbers. So I'm really happy that we're gonna hopefully step forward and do this.
Okay.
I concur with everything that's been said.
Okay, well, I would like to make the following motion.
Sandra, do you have it written down?
I do.
Okay.
Motion to authorize the supervisor and treasurer to draft and request a proposal from OHM advisors for determining the feasibility and cost to run water infrastructure under I-94 to service potential growth and review the water capacity study.
Support that. So a motion from Sandy, supported by Amanda. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Alright, the next item is air serve maintenance recommendation. I had met with the, um, air serve technician last month who would come out for regular maintenance, maintenance. And, um, so he just explained to me the way the air conditioning works, the way the boiler works, give me an idea of that whole system. And he did explain that he had actually sent us a, um, he had sent an estimate back in May of this year. He was recommending that we have some additional cleaning done on the blower assembly, the evaporator coil and to replace some run capacitors. Now, I don't understand how a lot of this works, but I definitely looked at the system and it was dirty. And he said that the, the dust and debris in the system can cause additional wear and tear, which then causes everything to, to wear quicker and could potentially cause more issues um, with having to fix it sooner or even replace parts. So I would like to go ahead and ask for that estimate to be approved and then they would come out this December, he said, and they would do that additional cleaning and replace the, uh, run capacitors that he identified on the system. I think maintenance of our system is really important. Alright, so I would make a motion to approve the air serve estimate 4424675 in the amount of $718.04.
Eighty-one dollars. Eighty-one, not eighteen.
Oh, then I wrote it wrong. So $781.04?
That's what the proposal says.
Thank you, I just wrote it wrong. For the maintenance of the heating and cooling system. Thank you. So motion from Amanda, supported by Sandy. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Alright, we will move on to the IT company. So I just got, I got this from Tyler, so I'm sorry it wasn't in the packet, but you guys have a copy of it. So we had asked Mr. Latendris to look at, to look at the two companies, Computer Ties and VC3. So he did have some discussions with both companies. And he prepared some, you know, basically just made a chart of the two companies. He was impressed with both companies. You know, he had a number of discussions with them. He has been amazing helping us with this transition, just to be here daily to help us with things that we need to update. We found out that the RICO printer, when we purchased it two years ago, there was an update that we needed on the server and that's why we had so many problems. That's why things wouldn't print right. So he was able to make that update and we've, it's been a lot better. So just that kind of, um, awareness has really helped us update a few of our, our, um, computers and processes. So definitely, uh, there are, I think something that Mr. Latendris had pointed out, you know, VC3's costs are going up. We don't have the same kinds of cost increases in Computer Ties. They have a fixed monthly fee of $850. That's, I'm, I'm going to defer to you Rod. That, there was no limit to that. There was never a time that will go higher, is there? That but there was no contract. It just renews every three years. So in that, in, in that renewal, it would increase? Yeah. Right. So we would be at that fixed cost of $10,200 for the annual, the fee annually, which is the fixed monthly fee of $850, at least until 2027. Whereas VC3, because of their 4% increase, would go up to, you know, $12,460 projected in 2027. So there'd be some savings there. I had some concern, it, because VC3 does offer after hours support. Whenever I've called, they're there, but if you call Computer Ties after hours, you would pay 120 to 800, or $180 an hour for that after, after hours support. That was, was a concern. But overall, I, uh, one thing that Mr. Latendris said is Computer Ties offers what's called extended detection and response XDR, which is a little bit more advanced than what VC3 offers. And it has to do with the security software in the background. So I could go both ways on this. I see value in both companies. Any, any thoughts?
Well, is, is there a motion or should we have discussion during, after the motion?
I was just gathering some, I have motions going both ways. I have a motion for both ways. I wanted to gather your feedback.
How often would we anticipate having after hours support?
You know, I work late a lot, so I personally have had questions after hours. I don't think that's maybe common of everyone, but if you drive by, you see I'm here.
It's like there's a $6,000 difference?
Yep.
So we'd essentially have 60 after hour calls.
Right.
60 hours of support.
Right.
Um, in one year? Is that the?
Uh, that's the overall. I think what he's, for, what the savings he is forecasting is over the three years.
Three years?
Yes.
Okay.
But that's a very valid point, Doug. Anyone else?
Oh, I think, um, first of all, whoever put this together, thank you.
Mr. Lexington.
Really easy to understand, compare, and I appreciate it. So, um, on the observations, uh, number two on the second. on the observations, number two on the second page, which is Computer Ties would likely have options for extending the current retention. Okay, just ask them if they do that, if there's a need for it to be retained for 90 days.
Mm-hmm.
And then S L A inclusion.
Yeah, I think that's something we would have to consider in the future. The current contract doesn't cover that service level agreement that Mr. Latendris is seeing in other agreements.
I am perfectly willing to go with somebody new.
Well, I definitely see the, the cost savings. All right, then, I will make a motion to continue services with Computer Ties LLC as approved in the September 12th, 2024 Sylvan Township Board of Trustees meeting and grant Tyler Latendris administrative access to the server and all accounts, which is something I talked to Computer Ties about as well. V C three had given him that access so that he can make the changes he needs to when he's here. So that is my motion. I have support. Support. Thank you, Sandy. Any other discussion?
I see your motion.
I will, yeah, I'll get it too.
Uh, I just wanted to make sure, you read it quickly and make sure it's got everything in there. So does this motion imply we're terminating V C three?
Yes. They are, we've already had them on a 90-day countdown and that expires on December the 7th. That's why we need to make a decision tonight. So once, if this motion is approved, then I will contact V C three and let them know that we are transitioning back to Computer Ties. And there's a process for that. Right, so I have a motion from myself, supported by Sandy. Any other discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries. All right, we will move on to board of review appointments. This item, agenda item is, is from Catherine Skoll and myself. So we are at the point where we need to appoint the board of review members. And Catherine is asking that Lee Aron, Ruben Lesser, Dave Reinhardt, and Jess Lee as alternate be appointed for a term of January 1st, 2025 through December 31st, 2026. So I will make a motion that, I'll just repeat it. Lee Aron, Ruben Lesser, Dave Reinhardt, and Jess Spike as board of review alternate be appointed to the board of review for the term of January 1st, 2025 through December 31st, 2026.
Support.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Are these Mr. Aaron Lesser and Reinhardt? And Jess Spike? Have they done this before? There's nobody new? And so they've all been trained and that type of thing?
And they, they have additional training that they have to fulfill, I think, every couple of years, which they have a training tomorrow, surely. All right. Anyone else? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. Motion carries, they are appointed. All right, we will move on to confirmation of planning commission appointments. So in the board packet, you see the agenda item. You also see a memorandum that I prepared regarding my appointment choices. So as you see, I am looking, and I'll just read the agenda item. Three members of the planning commission are currently serving beyond the expiration date of the appointment. Two members' appointments have been expired for 11 months and one for eight months. In addition, due to the recent election, the appointment of the township board's liaison to the P C has expired on November 20th, 2024. And all four planning commission appointments are required, and the supervisor is requesting confirmation of the appointments and/or reappointments that you see in the memorandum. You also see it on the agenda cover sheet. So I've spoken to all of the planning commission members that I am requesting appointment for. And you see, I am looking to confirm the appointment of Tom Barris to the planning commission for the remainder of a three-year term ending December 31st, 2026. And then a motion to confirm the appointment of Leah Herrick to the planning commission for the remainder of a three-year term ending December 31st, 2026. And a motion to confirm the appointment of Courtney Heller to the planning commission for the remainder of a three-year term ending December 31st, 2027. And a motion to confirm the appointment of Doug Jackson as the township board liaison to the planning commission for a four-year term ending November the 20th, 2028.
I'll move. A motion to confirm the appointment of Tom Barris to the planning commission for the remainder of a three-year term ending December 31st, 2026.
Support.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries, the appointment is confirmed.
I'll make the motion to confirm the appointment of Leah Herrick to the planning commission for the remainder of a three-year term ending December 31st, 2026.
Support.
Motion from Sandy, supported by Doug. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. Appointment is confirmed, motion carries.
I'll make a motion to confirm the appointment of Courtney Heller to the planning commission for the remainder of a three-year term ending December 31st, 2027.
Thank you.
Support.
Motion from Doug, supported by Sandy. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. All opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries, appointment is confirmed.
I'll make the motion to confirm the appointment of Doug Jackson at, as the township board liaison to the planning commission for a four-year term ending November 20th, 2028.
I will support that. All right, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Okay, appointment is confirmed, motion carries. All right. That, oh, no, I'm sorry, Sandy. We will move on to the additional request from Sandy for the planning review of, for a special permit for Robin Hills Farms.
Right. So the board, the board, the planning commission would like the, the board to approve funding for the attorney's part in reviewing the special permit that Robin Hills has.
What will that review entail? What, what, tell us more of what the attorney is going to do.
I don't know.
Why is, why is this request being made?
Why is the requi, because it has come under the observation, I guess, of various planning commission members that Robin Hills is not really fulfilling what they said they were gonna do through their special permit, as is farming. It doesn't appear that they're doing any farming. They ran sheep on there, which is okay. You know, it's sheep, doesn't matter who they belong to. But they are expanding into things that are not directly related to what their special use permit says that they're allowed to do.
And when, with the attorney reviewing that, what are they hoping the next actions would be?
I'm not sure. It's just that it's very often at planning commission meetings, there will be somebody who will say, oh, I saw in the, in the, in our online uh, communication newspaper, that they're having this event or that event or whatever kind of event.
I agree, and I agree for sure. I think they have moved further and further away from what they were originally appointed to do.
So that, so if people are going to complain, then we need to find out, are they actually doing something that they're not supposed to be doing? I think that's what they're trying to get to, is are they doing what they're supposed to be doing, or is most of the stuff they're doing not what they're supposed to be doing? And if they're doing things they're not supposed to be doing, then maybe their zoning needs to be changed. To something more appropriate to what they do.
I, I think there was concern though, on the planning commission, from what I listened to, that we want to be careful, that we wouldn't rezone it to like a commercial zoning, and then if Robin Hills sold it, it would.
It's a big deal, it's a big deal. So having our zoning person working with our attorney, they can figure out whether they are or aren't following what they're supposed to be doing on this special permit. And then they'll figure out what the next steps are.
Right. I think that's a good idea. It's, it's a little challenging not knowing exactly what the lawyer, you know, what Mr. Thaw will be doing, but I definitely would support having a legal review of what steps we would take to try and bring them into compliance with what we've approved, or look at what other options we have.
Well, for now, we could say something like not to exceed 10 hours or something like that.
So I am completely unfamiliar with their operations or what this special permit, or special use is.
So Robin Hills was given a special use permit under the Ag Tourism Ordinance. And I look at Rod, because Rod was here before me. The special use was for ag tourism. To allow them to have events that have to do with farming and to have activities that have to do with farming. Over time, we know they have a restaurant that they always try to fit within that box of it's to do with farming because they have sheep and they're using local, you know, food. But they're also having a lot of other events that really seem outside of the, what the ordinance allows. And so it's been a challenging situation where we want to support, support them, but we also need them to comply with what the original use was, what they were granted for the original use.
So there's, they're allowed to have events that have to do with farming, but not, say, hosting a wedding?
So it, their ordinance was, was based on Zingerman's Cornman Farm in Dexter.
Okay.
And so you might want to look at what they're doing, you know, how things have evolved at Cornman. Now, I saw an ad the other day, and it was all about weddings and events.
Mm-hmm.
So I've, and I don't know how long they've been open, but it's probably been 10 years. And it's probably time to review how it has evolved.
And I, I've heard concern from the planning commission that they haven't seen any kind of agricultural activity lately. I think at the last summer's fireworks, they had some sheep there, which was, they considered their own, but no one was really sure if they've got any kind of agriculture activity right now. So I think that's something to be reviewed. And whether they're in violation, and we want to do something about that, or whether we want to upgrade their, their permit, their special use permit to something different.
Do we allow additional uses under the Ag Tourism Ordinance? To try to encompass some of what they're doing, so then we don't look at rezoning the property in a way that if they sold it, then something would come in that we really wouldn't want there. So, you know.
Have there ever been any, like, noise complaints?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
And, and that's.
Then it's, then yes, I, I agree.
Okay, so what would you, what do you think would, you would want us to approve? An amount up to, I, I wouldn't, I mean, you've been at the planning commission as well, Doug, were you at this meeting where this was requested? So what was your sense that, what was the planning commission asking for?
Money.
I, I know money, but up to a certain amount?
No, but they, they didn't know. It was pretty amorphous at the time. So we can, we can offer something to them, and if that's not what they want, then they come back and ask for something else.
What would your motion be?
So I will move that the board of trustees approve payment to the township attorney not to exceed 10 hours while he works with Scott Pacheco to review the special use permit of Robin Hills.
Support. All right, so a motion from Sandy Schelcy, supported by Sandy Egler. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. All right, that will then conclude the business portion of the meeting, and we would move on to a second public comment. Do you have any? Dave, please step up. Thank you.
Dave Reinhardt, Sylvan Township president. I like the way you have this set up, by the way. Looks real official. Robin Hills, boy, we have two friends who are really bothered by the noise, but I've been there. And I think they run a pretty good operation. I agree, it's pretty far from agrotourism or however you want to. I would like to see Sylvan Township work with them to solve the problems, not make their life miserable. If noise is the issue, is it because it's a wedding, or is it the noise from a wedding? If it's the noise, that is currently, I think in one of their contracts or something that monitored, and if it's above whatever decibels, yeah, something's gotta be done. But let's not just make it miserable for them for the sake of uh, the planning commission doesn't seem to like them a whole lot. I don't know why, but that's, it's been very evident. So that's, that's one thing. I, I just want people, want Sylvan to work with people, not do what they can to stop it. And I don't think we should change his zoning, but let's modify their special agreement or whatever, so it, it stays with them, not whoever might own it later. Um, the decision, go with Computer Ties, I think is a good one. Um, I've had a little experience with both of them during my different hats I've worn here, and Computer Ties seems to respond really well, and V C three was kind of sketchy for a while, I thought. Sandra, I love the confirmation on the water. We need to have somebody else besides I Meg look at this thing. This is just, there's just too much. I mean, Patrick's bringing up things, and yeah.
I'm just so glad I found that report from 2022.
Yep, there's.
That's, yeah.
And that shouldn't be your job to do. So let's, let's get a second opinion. Yes, leave it at that. Uh, and lastly, Sandy, I agree with the ARPA funds. I don't think it's real easy. I mean, we're making sure that we don't lose them. That's the biggest thing. But how easy it would be to fritter it away, I would like to know if, or I, I believe there should be a way to track this, I don't know, 200,000 or whatever it is, where it's going, not just, you know, hey, it's gone.
No, it will be tracked.
So, oh, that's great then. Okay. Thank you.
All right, anyone else? Rod, please. Thank you.
Brad Brannus, Sylvan Township. I can, I concur with what Dave said a lot on the water and, and Robin Hills, their wedding barn got canceled because of an investor pulled out. So that's where that loss was. And like Dave said, they do have meters and they have shown where they weren't out of limits when somebody said they were. Just for whatever it's worth.
Wedding barn, they actually were, they wanted a wedding barn approved?
They were gonna build the wedding barn. It was approved. Yeah, and they, and one of their investors pulled out. They're struggling right now. You know, and so I, I'd really hate to see us lose them because too many restrictions.
What else would go there?
Yeah. And, um.
Robin Hills.
Thanks for the, thanks for the Computer Ties. V C three has been a world of trouble for a few years now, with non-response and things. So I, for one, appreciate that. I'm not even here anymore. a few years now with non-response and things. So I for one appreciate that. I'm not even here anymore. And lastly, I just want to note, I didn't hear anybody say anything about it, but Catherine McClary passed away yesterday suddenly. I just, I was gutted when I heard that one.
That was a blow.
Was, very much. That one, that one hit me. Thank you.
Anyone else? Patrick, please.
I have a few things. I would like to second what Rod said about the event barn at Robin Hills Farm. The history of this roughly is that the Ag Tourism Ordinance was approved first without the event facility, but then they went back to get the event facility written into the ordinance. So that is part of their special use right now. There would have been a much better financial situation if that thing had been built, probably. But that's, you know, that's just, just for clarification. Um, about the iMeg report, I was really shocked to hear of the poor quality in that report. And when I asked my question, I thought it was my misunderstanding. I was shocked to hear that it wasn't, that it was their error. And it makes a big difference because this report was presented to Chelsea and was used by Chelsea as part of their decision-making not to go forward with the interconnect, thinking that our capacity was more limited than it really is. Chelsea should be questioning iMeg too. Of course, we have no jurisdiction over Chelsea, but that's how shocking this is. I mean, this, this whole thing might be based on faulty numbers. As we go, and I think again, as other people have said, it's a great idea to get somebody independent to look at this stuff and, but build on studies that have already been done before, or validate them or invalidate them. And I, I believe that's not just the capacity study, but also there have been studies before commissioned by this township about what it would cost to go under I-94. So those should be presented to the new, the new engineer too, for a review, if we can find them. Because then they won't be starting over, and if they say something wildly different, they'll have an explanation of why it's wildly different again. And the new engineer that we have looking at this needs to make sure it's comprehensive, not just the cost to run the pipe under I-94, but also the costs of possible expansion of the treatment system due to capacity, right? Because that's part of the overall cost is if you're going to pipe there, but there's no water to put in the pipe, then what good is it, right? So I wanted to say that. I think, I think that's all my comments. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Steve?
Steve Kiss. Um, thanks for the efficient meeting. Two comments on that study. You trust the engineers to perform the study. I think it knocks the credibility. You don't know all the building blocks it took them to get to those numbers. So we don't know if those are good. Is there any clawback we can get from that consulting company based upon their invalid data? The other thing is, uh, the city of Chelsea needs to be made aware that this study is invalid because they're using it to make determinations. So I don't know, it should be a formal letter from the Board here to go to City of Chelsea.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. We will then move on to Board of Trustee comments. Sandy, me for you? Doug?
Yes, just a couple of things I'm, want the Board to be aware of. I'm interested in attending, uh, MTA training in Ann Arbor in January. So I'd like to be able to have the funds to sign up for that. And also, uh, to get certified, go through the process of, uh, becoming a notary.
That's, that is already in the budget for you to do both of those. You have an education budget and then out of the Clerks Department, we will also pay for you to be bonded as a notary.
Right.
That's just a process. I'll show you.
But I think, uh, I'll need the credit card or something to get processed or somehow, so we're not-
Yep, as we'll, if we, even if we need to do that before we can get that figured out, get those paid for, we can just put it on the credit card.
Okay.
Just let me know. Sandy?
I don't have anything this time.
I just want to say, holy cow. This has been an amazing couple of weeks. So much to do, but Sandy and Doug, you are both just incredible. We have been working together. We have had Mr. Latendras helping us. But just to be able to work together, we had a good, Sandy and I had a good meeting with Bob Skol today, our DPW administrator. And we are wanting data. We are asking Bob hard questions and you know, discussing how we can collaborate to get these numbers, and it's going down the rabbit hole and trying to figure out the history to get some of these reports that we have been lacking to understand where, where we were, how we got here to help us go forward in a way that makes sense. So, you know, even looking at staff, talking about how to improve operations, you know, getting feedback from staff to, to understand what things we can improve. So I'm just, I'm really impressed with the professionalism and the ability to collaborate and have these uh, discussions with each other and with staff so that we can improve things. We have a pre-construction, um, meeting tomorrow with Chelsea Square, which is Jack Knoll's 82-unit apartment complex. It's over right next to, um, it's off of Pele Meyer Drive to the west of Chelsea Hillcrest. So that should be an interesting meeting. And again, looking at, um, one issue that we've been dealing with is Chelsea Hillcrest, which is to the east of Chelsea Square. And again, I know there's all of these names. There have been some problems with the way that developer put infrastructure in the ground. We're talking tens of thousands of dollars of problems. And so our next question will be to the engineer from MCI, asking them what, what inspections were done, and if there were inspections missed, in trying to get a hold of why there were those problems, so that going forward, looking at Chelsea Square, we do not have, you know, we have, we don't want to have those mistakes made again because they're costly. Now with Chelsea Hillcrest, we can go after bond money from the developer because we haven't finalized that project, but learning from that situation so that going into this next development, we will make sure that we have better processes in place so that we're not running into some of these issues that we're finding with, you know, these are real problems that these residents are facing with water infiltration in their basements and in their garages because grades were done wrong, the wrong sized pipes were put in the ground.
Not connected.
Not connected, we found. Holy cow, they were not connected. So, um, this is just, I'm really, but I'm just, there's a lot, but I'm just excited because I feel like we have a really good team and we're going to ask the right questions and, and really update our processes so that we're, you know, we're fixing some of these problems going forward. So thank you.
Mm-hmm. So there are all these problems with this area. Is this something that a project manager might follow up on?
Well, I mean, as we're looking to, what's the word? I know.
You know, it, it's tough to say. The short answer is, yeah, project manager would be great. The long answer is can we even afford to do things? And you know, the, the water system, as everybody is painfully aware, is underfunded through, you know, the, the user fees, and the general fund has been subsidizing that. And so we have to get a handle on needs. Um, when we talked to Bob this morning, it was, I want a detailed list of whatever he believes the capital needs, the repair and maintenance needs for the water fund is going to be. You know, we, off the top of our head, we know one is repainting the tower, and that's hundreds of thousands of dollars. And so we've, we've got to know what globally, ev- all the needs are, and then prioritize them, and then start figuring out how we can fund them. And so, you know, I'm hoping we can get a whole lot accomplished in the next four months as we head into the budget season and just start trying to answer some of these questions. I will tell you, right now, the way my head is spinning, that I do believe we're going to come back with a proposal to hire a different engineering firm for everything. Because I've lived water sewer for my entire married life as, living with the person who installs it and now inspects it. And when I saw what I saw this week with what's going on up at Hillcrest, shoddy work, not caught by the inspector, which my arena is completely unacceptable. And, you know, we're going to be talking with him tomorrow to find out more information.
Engineer from MCI, after the pre-construction meeting, we've requested additional time with him to talk about what happened at Hillcrest. To try to understand, I also have the log, his inspection log, to try and understand what actually was being inspected, when, during this, you know, when this infrastructure was being put in the ground. You know, these are hard, these are, you know, these are the, these are the questions we need to ask.
And honestly, I think we're going to end up with the same kinds of questions of, I hate this acronym, CACA. Because when I go out there and I see a person's driveway going like this into the garage rather than this, how did anybody allow that to happen? And unfortunately, there's no way to fix it. They, they addressed the drainage issue, and they, they put a drain in that driveway to catch the water before it got into her garage. But I mean, she's got damage in her garage because of it.
So the whole, the whole, I mean, the whole driveway needs to be torn up and then regraded so that the water then will end up in the street, but, but, but that's what we're going after the bond money for.
When we, Doug and I went out there and looked at it, he said, there's no way to fix it. There's not enough grade to lean it back to the proper way. So, you know, was the building not right? Was the road not right? Something's not right. So, you know, it, it's just, we got to get our act together as far as in the building and who's responsible for what. Let them know what they're responsible for and, and start moving forward with protecting our citizens and the township from any kind of liability.
Sandy and I met with them on Saturday, the residents out at Hillcrest, to just get a better idea. You know, we want them to feel supported. And then we need to understand on site what is actually going on, because you can look at, at plans, but when you're standing there, it's much better.
Yeah, when, when you look, and, and, you know, one of their other issues is there's a retaining wall be- behind all of these homes. And apparently they just ran out of block, so they quit building it. So then that guy's getting all the water in his basement. And-
And again, the question is, why was that, you know, who didn't inspect that? Why was that allowed?
So there's a whole lot of answers that we need to get in. In a way, it's good because it's teaching us what we need to do better and what we, you know, how, how we got to process better, but we just can't let this happen on, on the next one, who happens to be next door, and these poor people already have water issues. And we got to make sure the new one doesn't cause more water issues.
So if, if, if a project manager is, seems appropriate and we have the funds for it, um, that would be, you know, something we'd consider, but as we're looking to, uh, restructure things in the office and how we're, we're, you know, approaching processes, those will be discussions that we'll be having and bringing to the Board for more discussion and then approval. Thank you. Anyone else?
It, it, it's been a hectic couple of weeks.
It's been a hectic couple of weeks, Sandy. It's been a hectic couple of weeks. All right. Anyone else? All right. Thank you. So, yes. Yeah. Absolutely. We'll get you another one.
There was an old one that was up there, and so our scene needs one.
Okay, we'll print two for sure.
Here, you can have mine, and then we'll just, I'll just get another one.
We'll print you another one.
That's the new one.
Hang on one sec. If Doug has an extra, we'll give you this one, and we'll print more. Yeah. Thank you so much. All right. Wonderful. Well, then that concludes the Board member comments. I will entertain a motion to adjourn at eight, or excuse me, 8:25 from Sandy.
Support for that?
Support.
I have a motion from Sandy, supported by Doug. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion, or excuse me, goodness. Meeting is adjourned at 8:25. Thank you.
Can I borrow your-
Your 25 minute?
Blue?
No.
Does somebody have a blue or a black?
Yeah.
Can I borrow, can I borrow your pen? Thank you.
Okay. Okay, I think I've seen you at the-
Thank you.
Commission meetings, but I've been over there.
Good, good.
So much.
Thank you.
That, it's my, yeah, nice office.
Nice to meet you. Yeah, plus, yeah, working.
Want to come do mine?
Steve Kiss.
Chair of the ZBA. Okay. Got it. Where did I come from? My parents. I used to work for SIO Township for 33 years. Retired from there, left there at 7:30 on the 20th and came here and almost haven't been home since.
You thought it was going to be easier, huh?
I, I did. My husband certainly thought it was going to be less. Now it's more. Mr. Brannum. You're welcome. Thank you. I'm finally warming up. I said, I'm finally warming up. Just a time to go home.